Thank you for coming and participating in our work session today. The public made view our board meeting with you two for Edgecombe County Public Schools. I would declare this meeting to come to order. Welcome, everyone. Would you stand with us as we do our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the beautiful, liberally and just as for all.
Thank you. May be seated. We will try to follow our agenda for the evening. At this time, I would need to hear motion to approval, for the approval of our agenda.
Madam Chair, move for the approval of the agenda that's printed.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve. Our agenda is printed. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
To motion, anyone disapprove, here it now. Our agenda is approved. And we are at item three, presentation of our draft, optional D for redistricting map. Ms. Sergeant Speng.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Board members and superintendent. So, just to set the scene, and I know Blake, pull up presentation. We have just a shortened version of the presentation to show the briefly, we'll go over the first three options that the board looked at last time, and then the fourth option that the board requested that is based on county commissioners' maps. And so, we will start. I'll turn it over to Blake, and I'll stand by to ask and answer any questions. Blake, can you see that? And are you ready to go?
I am. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Well, as Debra said, well, good evening. It's good to see you all. And as Debra said, we're going to start with a review of some of the options that we've seen before, and actually, the very first slide is just a reminder about what the existing districts look like, and of course, the reason we're doing this is that the jurisdiction, what did not used to be part of the jurisdiction here is now, so the districts are all growing in size by about 25 percent, or should say, growing in population by 20 percent, sorry, 25 percent. And you'll see that these slides look somewhat like the additional, the supplemental slides that are provided after the March 10th work session, so that they have the map and the demographic information, as well as total population deviation, basically, the population statistics are on the slide with each of these drafts, or each of these plans. This is showing the first option that we have presented, and again, this is the option that was based on prioritizing a minimum change from the existing districts. So, this option A was designed to have as little change, keeping in mind that all the districts had to add about 1,400 people, but this was designed to keep them as similar to the existing districts as possible. Draft option B2, this is the draft option where the criteria that was prioritized was compactness, trying to keep the districts as compact as possible, and a reminder that it's called B2 because the first version of B that I created, actually, I was not looking at where incumbents were located, but as it turned out, with very minor changes, I was able to move the district boundaries in such a way so that no two incumbents would be paired in the same district. Draft option C, this is the one that was focused on preserving communities of interest intact, and was responsive to public input that the board received about communities of interest in Edgecombe County, and this was drawn to keep those communities of interest intact and groups of communities or neighborhoods together to the extent possible. This was something that was brought up in the previous work session, so we wanted to include a slide showing the county commission districts. So, this, the county commission has had districts for a number of years now, also seven districts, but the lines of these districts, if the board were to use these districts, there would be two incumbents, sorry, two districts where each of which would have a pair of incumbents in them. So, two districts where incumbents would be required to run against each other. So, that takes us into draft option D, and the idea, this was something that was proposed in the last work session, would be an additional option based on the county commission districts, but modified so as to prevent the pairing of incumbents in one district. So, the changes made here were essentially to prevent the pairing of school board members being paired in the same district, and then also making sure that the population equality was in the threshold, the tolerance that's allowed. I did want to note here, and there's a note on the slide, that the numbers of these districts were chosen to match the numbers of the current school board members districts. So, the numbers do not match the county commission district numbers except for District 2. And this slide is similar, the map is similar to what we've seen before, except the black outlines have the county commission district boundaries overlaid, so this makes it more easy to see where the changes were made. And you can see that there was a change here, small change, so that the board member who is in District 5 would be outside of this district, and then changes between the orange and blue area here, so that the board member currently representing District 3 would be, have their district connected to this district, most of which is in Rocky Mountain, most of the population of which is in Rocky Mountain. And there'll be some zoomed-in views on later slides that show this area in more detail.
Blake, are you, Blake, are you sharing your screen? Because we've got the presentation up separately, and so, if you're sharing your screen, I think we'll close out of this one, so we can see where.
I am sharing my screen. So, let me know, thank you for letting me know.
There you go.
Is it, please let me know, I can see just a corner of the screen behind the desk there, so I'm not sure if it's what you're able to see, but please let me know when I should proceed.
Okay. Sorry about that, we're back up legs. I just wanted to, you said you were pointing out things, we couldn't see that, so I just wanted to make sure we could see. So, now we've got you, thanks.
Okay. And can you see the pointer on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will review a little bit of what I was saying before, and these slides do have some explanatory text here, but this slide shows draft option D, which has the colored shading and the thinner outlines, and overlaid on that, and the black outlines are the county commission districts. So, when you see a black outline, have a black outline like this one here with two colors in it, that's showing where there's a departure from the, from the county commission And the three areas where there's the departures are here along the boundary between District 5 and District 6, here in District, what, the county commission district in the black outline is, some of that is reassigned, and some of the area in this county commission district is reassigned as well. But it's worth noting that, I think that of 1,760 blocks in the county, only 33, and these are census blocks, were reassigned. So, more than 98 percent of the census blocks are still assigned to the same district that they are in the county commission plan. And in terms of population, about 1,700 people out of a total of about 49,000 people were reassigned, so more than 96 and a half percent of the population would stay in the same district. When I say the same district, not the same as the school district, in the same district as they are in the commission district. And again, the motivation for this that was proposed was that this, voters would not have to, in most cases, distinguish between the county commission district they're in and the school board district they're in. This map is very similar to the one we were just looking at, but in addition to the features that were shown on that map, this shows the location of the school board members residences. And those are the numbers in purple. And at any point, I'm happy to come back to any of these slides. As I mentioned, we'll have some zoomed-in slides, and the red rectangle here is showing where we're going to zoom into, because within that red rectangle are all the areas where census blocks were reassigned, where changes were made. And here I've labeled where the changes were made, and sort of quantified the extent of the changes. So, this change here was able to be made only reassigning two census blocks. This change here, although it's hundreds of people, only involved three census blocks. And this one, which is the largest one, did involve 28 census blocks, but a lot of those do not have high population numbers. And just in terms of some of the features of this, this, while this is a departure from the county commission districts, these reassigned blocks you see in blue here, these three blocks are actually in the existing school board District 7. So, that would be consistent with the existing presence in school board District 7. This line here, while it departs from the county commission district boundaries, actually, a lot of this boundary is currently a boundary between existing school board districts, and it follows Cokey Road, then Nobles Mill Pond Road, then Howard Avenue, then US 64. As with draft option D, I'm sorry, as with all the previous maps, I have provided for draft option D, this slide that has the same demographic information that was presented for the, the other drafts, as well as total population deviation numbers, et cetera. I have, just in the last hour or so, updated the interactive map, so that the option D layer is on there. I have that available on my computer here, if people have areas they want to zoom into, or layers they want to compare. I've also added the county commission district outlines, so one can look at those. I've been told that the GeoFigure.com is not working in every situation, so I'm working on a fix for that. The QR code and the other link that I've sent should work. I also can share a shorter URL than that, the long one, but we can do that in a moment, as I said, if, I've got the interactive map in another window that I can share. And then, I think it might be helpful, as we go into the discussion, and I'll pass it back to Debra for this, to talk about sort of what, what we might be expecting to come out of this work session, with what additional information, and where this step fits in the process. So, with that, I will turn it back over to Debra.
Thank you, Blake. So, you have seen this slide before, it is sort of our sample timeline, or a series of steps that the board may wish to take, the requirement, or the last two, to adopt a plan by resolution, and then provide that to the Board of Elections, but in between, we've got some, some steps that we recommended, and the board has, so far, has been going through, preparing a few alternate plans, setting up one or more public hearings, reviewing and revising the plans. And so, really, the next step could go a few ways, the board, and we'll go back and allow some discussion about option D and the other options, but just be thinking about, maybe at this point, you've seen four plans, certainly, you could request something else, but be thinking about whether you can sort of start narrowing down the options. And I think that, you know, everything has been available to the public, we've had one, a couple of public meetings, we've had some information sessions, so narrowing it down to two, perhaps, to present in a more formal setting, have, we talked about setting up large hard copy maps in different places, continuing to have the maps online, so that the public can look at it, taking feedback from the public online, and through comment at hearings and board meetings. You know, if you're in a position tonight, or at your next board meeting, to narrow down those options to two, to go forward with the next step of having some more public input, I think that might be, you know, might be a good option, because we do have, again, the December filing deadline, is our deadline to complete those last two steps of adopting a new plan. I know it's only April, but time's going to go fast, and we've got to know, May will be busy for you all at the end of the school year. Summer can sometimes be difficult to get people together, so just want to make sure that you all have in your minds the timeline and the deadlines that we have to complete the process. We've still got plenty of time, don't want anyone to feel rushed, but you've seen four options, if there's something that you'd like to see outside of that, that's perfectly fine, we can do that, but if you feel like you've seen a good array of options, and perhaps are in a position to narrow it down to two, I think that would be the next step.
Madam Chair, I would just add, to add along to the staggering comments of, it was two, four meetings ago, maybe, for the session, if we have a process outlined, once you want to advertise what your options are for the public, that's already in place for us to move forward. One sec.
About six pages on D.
And if I may, I do have the presentation from the previous work session, or work sessions that had substantial detail, for example, introducing the communities of interest that were considered an option C, or comparing side-by-side option A with the existing districts. So, if anyone would like to see some of the slides from a previous presentation, I've got those available. I just, we didn't want to present, you know, 100 slides tonight.
About D, about six. Okay. Four. This doesn't have anything about A, B, C, D. This is a generic question. We've talked about districts. What we have not talked about is how will the districts affect our students, and how will it affect our busing? Because now, a District 5 student has transportation to their school. If we have these new districts, is that going to affect...
This is just for election, the board members, it won't have any impact on schools at all?
That was my question, because I want to make sure before we decide it's not going to prevent a student, okay.
Just for the board.
Because currently, you know, if you're out of your district, like if I wanted to go to North Edgecombe.
Does not impact us.
Okay. That's, that was the most important thing, because...
Besides who a peer student's representing.
Right, right. Got you, but we get it, they would have transportation to where they're going to school currently.
That will not change. That will not change.
And thank you, Ms. Kemp, for bringing that up again. I know I've said it repeatedly in several different presentations, but it's always good to remind people, because I know it gets, you talk about redistricting, and the public sometimes thinks it has to do with where students will attend school. This has nothing to do with where students will attend school. It's only for electing board members. And it's required because you had more population added to the district, and that puts your districts out of balance for the one person, one vote. And so that's why we're doing this again, instead of after the census every 10 years that we normally do.
And I've had a lot of questions in reference to making the statement. Well, I don't want my, I don't want my children to go to school in Tarboro. Tarboro, I say the buildings that they're in, that's where they will be. Not getting on a bus, drive, you know. So that is what I get a lot. And I just want to make sure that that information is in the public, because that's what people are concerned about. You know, concerned about the voting district as much as they're concerned, you know, I'm sure the Rocky Mount group is, because they've not been included in voting. But the rest of the county's concern was, when you think about redistricting, is moving people, children. And that's what people outside of the Rocky Mount district have been concerned about.
I think in one of the early set of materials that we provided that was put on the website, that's included in there, but, you know, we can certainly pull out some of that language and highlight it, so that when people go there, they'll see it in front of them. And I can certainly work...
And we need to keep saying...
And we've tried to reiterate that on several occasions as well, to the public, to make sure they understood it was not a redistricting issue. But we will continue to have that conversation.
If you could help me, Raymond Privet, District Six, if you could pull up and show me my boundaries, I'm not sure, and let me know where my boundaries are in the D option. Where my boundaries there?
Sorry, I was speaking, I was muted. Let me, let me work on that. So I will share my screen with the interactive map. I think that's the best way to highlight something like this in detail. And it just is taking a moment. I have a number of windows open, and it's just taking a moment for me to select the window I want to share with you. Here we go. So right now, it's showing Option A. This is just a reminder, the way, and please let me know if you can't see this window I'm sharing, but I'm going to turn off Option A, and then hover over Option D and go from the closed eye to the open eye. And District Six is the 10 district, but we can even, if we go to here, one of the options is show only this district. So just to make it that much more clear, and then we can zoom in on the district. And the road labels are showing, so this up here is North Main Street, US 64, alternate. Down here is 64. On the western side here is a creek that's, let me put my glasses on, Pender's Mill Run. It looks like the western boundary here is Pender's Mill Run. And then, basically, the eastern boundary is North Main Street and US 64. The part that is different from the county commission district is, as I said, this is Canada's two census blocks here, and this is the Kensington Drive, Cambridge Drive, Essex Street, Peskett Street. I know in the communities of interest, this was identified as a subdivision, but I don't have the name of that subdivision in front of me.
Austin-Pines.
So that's...
Yeah, Austin-Pines.
Thank you. Yeah. And that's included. I'll turn on District Five.
Where I live. That's the only reason I know it.
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
That answers one of them. Now, the communities of interest, are they left intact in this, in this, in this option for the most part? Are we splitting the neighborhoods in here?
I basically kept the boundaries the way that they were in the county commission districts. So if the county commission districts' boundaries are dividing communities of interest that the public identified in this process that we've had this year, that would not change. I do know, let me see, it'll take me a moment, but I don't, I know you can't see what I'm doing, but I have some other documents in front of me. So that, let me see. There was a group, Austin-Pines, Brentwood, and the community group requested that Austin-Pines, Brentwood, and, just one moment, I think it's called Mobile Home Estates is, I can check. Again, this would be on in a previous slideshow, just one moment. This is in the Tarboro area. They had, yes, Group One was Brentwood. They identified as a group, Brentwood, Mobile Home Estates, and Austin-Pines as a group. And so this, this plan would separate that group, Austin-Pines being in one district, and the other two I mentioned, Brentwood and Mobile Home Estates, being in another district. As far as in the Rocky Mount area, I did not make many changes, so the communities of interest would be handled in the same fashion as they are with the existing county commission districts.
And I'll just jump in and remind, so the Option C prioritized the communities of interest. The board at the last work session asked to look at the commissioner's map with as few changes as possible in order to accommodate the incumbents. So for Option D, Blake was not looking, again, at communities of interest, because the board wanted to prioritize keeping the county commissioner's map with as few changes as possible. So, you know, that's something I think we can go back and overlay and look and see where those, where Option C and Option D perhaps changed, and then you could point out that C did prioritize communities of interest, D prioritized the commissioner's map. So you could overlay those two and get some sense of where the changes are.
And that's my next ask, to see if you could overlay that from C?
Sure. So, Option C is drawing now, and I'm going to hide Option D for a moment, just to sort of remind us without having that additional information there, what Option C looks like. So you can see that Option C has District Five sort of occupying this area, and I believe that District Five included, includes Austin-Pines, Brentwood, and that Mobile Home Estates. There's a District Two, the green district here, had a group which was called Group Three by the community folks that identified groups in Tarboro. And that Group Three had, let's see, I think nine or 10 different neighborhoods, and almost all of those, and I'll read through those, these would be Martin Middle area, so Forest Acres, East Tarboro, Martin Middle, Wendell Acres, Hope Lodge, Belvedere, Potillo School area, and Panola Heights. And almost all of those are kept intact or all together in both C and D, but Belvedere, which is, I'll show you. So Belvedere is kind of in this area, and if we turn on Option D again, so, and I'm I have forgotten, there's a way to show all of these in one quick, and... There we go. So you can see that the boundary between the pink and the green, between Five and Two, is East Northern Boulevard here in Option D, but in Option C, District Two extends across East Northern Boulevard. But as Deborah said, this analysis about communities of interest is something I did after, after making the changes to the county commission districts, not as part of the process. My process was to make the changes in as minimal a way as possible, minimizing the changes from the county commission districts while not having any two incumbents paired in the district.
Is that the mission of our district?
And you can see that both Option C, Option C has District Five stretches fairly long from west to east, from Rocky Mount into an area near the, actually, part of Tarboro.
Yes.
And in Option D, Option D also has a district that is sort of long and slim, you're extending east from the Rocky Mountain area.
Blake, is there a way to show with perhaps a darker line to do an actual overlay of one map from the other?
So we can draw both at the same time, and I realize this can get a bit kind of cluttered, but if there's a specific area I may be able to, that folks are interested in, I may be, I can turn some districts on and off to make the changes clear. For example, if someone wanted to see the changes in District Five between two plans, I could just limit it to District Five. I can also play with the transparency here, so that District Five, but with all the districts showing, I find this gets sort of confusing, and it's hard to know which is which.
I was wondering if you just could do like a black outline...
Another thing that...
A darker outline, so we can see...
Just like you did with the commissioner district overlaid on the new map, just with the dark outline instead of the colors.
So would you like that for Option C, with it being shown with the dark outline and Option D in color?
Yes.
Yes, I think that would be helpful.
And just to be clear, what I'm doing, what I'm showing now is the version that I can edit. This is not a feature that is available for anyone using this on the web, but I will make this hollow and make the boundary a little wider.
That's helpful.
Okay. So Deborah, is this more what you had in mind?
Right, yes. So what's showing now in the colored districts are the new Option D, overlaid on that are the boundaries of Option C, which were the communities of interest version.
And just, we have a slide, and I think you got printouts of the slides, but it's helpful also to see, as Deborah mentioned, Option C and Option D were drawn using a different process and a different starting point. And the starting point for Option D was these county commission districts, and these are now in the interactive online map. So I will make that boundary a little bit wider as well. So you can see, for example, District Two, District Four, District One, those are all still identical to what they were in the county commission plan, what they are in the county commission plan. District Five and District Six, very similar to those districts in the plan, in the county commission plan. And this is something you can, or any person using the interactive map can use online. I'm happy to go back to this if that was helpful.
Is there any particular area you'd like to zoom in on?
I'm sorry, if there was a response to Deborah's question, I didn't catch it.
No.
While he's doing the overlays, does anyone else have a question around this table in reference to, similarly to what Raymond just asked? Do you have a concern about your district? Because right now where he has everything, it's the time to answer that question, because he doesn't need to click off that and then we can't find it again. So if you got a question in reference to this issue, because I'm getting ready to move it now, because we done seen enough ticking and tacking. Because you can make your notes and we're gonna be meeting again and.
And I know that, you know, board members, you all just got Option D today before the meeting. Again, like in the past, we didn't communicate this with anyone ahead of time. We wanted to make sure all board members had it, received it at the same time before the board meeting. So it is a lot of information. I hope you had a chance to go back through the first three options before now and be more familiar with those, but certainly if you need more time to decide whether, you know, which two you would like to move forward or which one you have a preference for, that is certainly understandable. But if you have questions about Option D or the previous options, I think this is a good time to ask those questions and get the clarification. And if you don't feel ready to make a decision tonight, and again, you all can bring this back at another meeting, but I think once you do narrow it down to two, that's a good time to then set up the public information sessions, public hearings like Dr. Bryan mentioned.
I'm not sure about anybody else, but I would need some more time to, I'm just finding out where I am, where they are. I would need a little more time, because yours comes up to mine, and I need to know which part is that that I had that's going to you. I need to know where they are. That's why I asked about the boundaries.
Would you like to see the current school board districts overlaid on Option D? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, that would be good. That would help. All the help I can get.
And again, Blake can zoom in to look at a specific area as well.
Okay, I just got one question, Madam Chair, while he's doing it. Who, which commissioner is in District 1?
That's Jared Wiggins. Chair Wiggins.
And again, these, yeah, these are the current, current board member districts.
Yes. And so this outline I'm tracing here is the current outline for District 6, including part, sort of the, part of the western part of Tarboro, and extending down here. And then the shape of District 6 in Option D is what's in the tan color here with the, And I can also, if it's helpful, to see where you live.
I know where I live. It's my own thing, I know.
For, for to where 6 lives, if you will, to make sure I know where, to make sure I know where, okay? I'm digging that.
That's a good thing. I have trouble going home.
I got your street. I got you.
Okay, we have one more item that we need. Complete item four, Dr. Brown. You have to share with.
No ma'am, it's just a matter of if the board is finished with their discussion. Go ahead on this.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, so if you know more questions from board members or, certainly discussion, I'm free, happy to answer any questions. If you're feeling comfortable with selecting some options to move forward with, Blake can prepare the files so that large maps can be printed. If you're not ready to do that, we can just wait and get further direction from you at a later time.
No, I'm just thinking for Evelyn Wilson, we are not ready to make that decision right now, because we got this packed too late. So all of us, and I can go home and study and get yourself straight when we come back.
I agree.
And in the past, for the last work session, the next day, the presentation was posted online so that the public can also look at it. So I assume that the board would like to do that as well.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will also share with staff the, the, sorry, the shape files and the block equivalency files, so that if members of the public want to do their own analysis, they've requested that those shape files be made available in the past. And I will make those available, so those can be added to the website. And then I'm also, I'm gonna share my screen one more time. As I mentioned earlier, there is a simple URL for the interactive map, and, I apologize, this is just quite slow for me to be able to identify the window that I have open on my screen to share. I'm waiting for its response, but here we go. I appreciate your patience. I know you're ready to move on to another item. I just wanted to make sure that for the interactive map, there is a way for folks to see it that will work. So in addition to geofigure.com, which I think seems to work most of the time, I've added this, so this is tinyurl.com/epsmap. So I do apologize that the geofigure.com apparently has been a little finicky, but this is another option that will take you to the interactive map. Again, tinyurl.com/epsmap. But the geofigure one, I hope, will be working for everyone by the end of the day today, or, you know, when everybody wakes up in the morning. Some of these things have to propagate through internet systems around the world, so, again, thank you for your patience with that. I will stop sharing.
Blake, William Ellis, just one, and I think you answered the question, and you don't have to pull the map back up, but the Rocky Mountains, their neighborhoods stayed very close to North Sea World as far as the neighborhoods not being split up enough in Option D.
In Option D, they stayed very close to what the existing county commission districts are. So, and those, those are different, but I think the majority, I believe the majority of those communities of interest that were identified are kept whole, whether they're grouped together in the same way as was requested in sort of groups of individual communities. I have not done that analysis, but that's something that one could look at. I'm happy to bring it up now. If you'd like me to show those layers, but, or I can prepare to, to come to the next meeting with a slide that actually shows, you can remember, in the March presentation, I took a layer from the city of Rocky Mountain and had that in a slide, and I could show where the boundaries interact with those, where the boundaries in Option D, how those interact with the communities of interest in Rocky Mountain.
If he has to give a question, or, anybody has that question for Mr. Blake?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You as well, sir.
Can't get nod, let me know if the board has anything else to say.
Oh, okay.
I need the motion to adjourn this meeting. Has been moved at proper step in that we will adjourn our work session. Any other discussion on the motion? Our table, let me say, I oppose, same song, motion is carried.